I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Committee of Faculty Staff and Administration. Thank you for your indulgence. As long as another meeting. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 4th, 2006?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries. We will now move to the policy calendar, and I would like to call on Provost David Christie to introduce item 1B1 and naming opportunity at Baruch College.
Thank you very much, Trustee Beal. I'll be quite brief. Joel and Lillian Cohen are long-term donors and alums of Baruch College. Mr. Cohen most recently served as the Chair of the Baruch College Fund Board, and they've made significant gifts over some period of years, directing their gifts particularly towards student development issues and preparing students to compete effectively in the job market. The proposal that we have before you is to name the conference room in the Career Services area at Baruch College, the Joel and Lillian Cohen Conference Center.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Doris Holtz, Vice President for College Development at BMCC, will present item 1B2.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay. I am presenting on Leslie Siegel, who's been a friend of the college for quite a few years. She made a gift of $100,000 for purely scholarships several years ago, and this year, in October 2015, Leslie decided to make a gift of $50,000, a pledge over two years, to, and she'd like, we'd like to name the Piano Lab on the third floor at Fittiman Hall in a memory of her parents, Art and Rita Siegel, who were both music lovers. The first payment of $25,000 has been received, and the second installment will be provided prior to December 2016. The Piano Lab includes more than 20 electronic pianos with headphones that make it possible for students to learn in a group setting how to play the piano as well as music theory.
Thank you. I'll move that. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Will President Fritz join us at the table in naming opportunity at the College of Staten Island?
Thank you, Trustee Beal. We are in the process of renovating our building called 2M. It's been sitting vacant since the Willowbrook days, and it will be an 80,000-square-foot renovation, but we're doing it in four phases to spread the cost out. Phase one starts on the second floor of a two-story building, and so a signature piece is a glass atrium that will provide a stairwell access to the first floor. Richmond County Savings Foundation has been a longtime friend of the college. They've given us over $685,000 over the years. They pledged $250,000 to name this atrium to make it a student. It's large enough that it will be benches and a student gathering place, and at our gala this fall, they actually presented us with a check for that pledge, so it's actually, the entire amount is cash in hand. And so we think that this will really be a signature piece to that renovated building.
Well, I will move that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries, and congratulations. Will Lori Dorf, interim Vice President for Institutional Advancement at Queens College, join us?
Hi, good evening.
I'd like to see the work real quick. Weren't you just here?
Yeah. I'm becoming a regular. Sort of want to have a little place part. Okay. Thank you for having me tonight. Con Edison and Queens College has had a very good relationship over the years, and we recently negotiated a pledge and a donation of $250,000 over five years. We received the first $50,000. It's to support our STEM programs, and it's actually called Q-STEM because they're enhancing it to science, technology, environment, mathematics, and training initiatives. It'll support some capital projects for this lecture hall that we want to name in their honor, internships for students, research in the sciences, and enhance our academic programs. And in light of the relationship we'd have, we have with them, we want to name the room in honor of Con Edison.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
It's to be.
It's been moved. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the motion carries, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Our next two matters involve governance plans. To present item 1B5, I will call on Deputy General Counsel Jane Sovereign and Provost Mauricio Trevissano of City College.
Thank you, Trustee Beal. I am balancing, given the lateness of the hour, but the importance of the issue, I am balancing by trying to take enough time, but not too much in detail. So let me just give a short summary of the governance plan for the new CUNY School of Medicine. As I believe you all know, that the mission of the school is to produce a diverse group of broadly educated, highly skilled medical practitioners, that is, MDs and physician assistants, to provide quality health services to communities that have been historically underserved by primary care physicians. The governance plan provides for the dean as the chief academic and administrative officer of the school, who will report to the president of City College. There will be a faculty council to work with the dean to formulate educational policy and develop standards to, and deal with all the issues that faculty governing bodies deal with, the governance bodies deal with. The faculty council will comprise all faculty members, including clinical and adjunct faculty. Clinical and adjunct faculty will have voice, but no vote. There will be an executive committee to transact business in between meetings of the faculty council, and that will include, in addition to administrators, all department chairs, and a faculty member from each department. There will be standing committees that will have a majority of faculty, and there will be student members on appropriate committees. The MD and the physician assistant programs will each have their own standing committees. There will be departments that will include clinical medicine, which will include faculty who provide oversight of the students' clinical instruction, as well as affiliated faculty who will, are employees of affiliated hospitals but are not employed by or paid by CUNY. And the departments may be created or deleted upon the recommendation of the dean and two-thirds vote of the executive committee. And there are department chairs who are appointed by the dean in consultation with the applicable department. And amendments to the governance plan, as is typical, may be proposed by petition or an affirmative vote of 20% of the voting members of the faculty council, and may be adopted by a two-thirds vote of the council. The governance plan was approved by Sophie Davis's faculty council on December 10th, 2015, and is recommended by the dean and the president of City College. I note that this, the version that you have today is very slightly different than the earlier version. There were a few comments that came from UFS folks and, just at the end of last week, and including ensuring that the admissions committee would be constructed in such a way so as not to be subject to the open meetings law, which seemed very inappropriate for that to be happening for admissions decisions being made. And that's, that's the summary.
Quick question. In regards to the student, the section with the student committees, how would the students be determined to be on those committees?
In this, in the different section?
Yeah.
We will be basically a combination between the dean and talking to the students, and the students are chosen.
And do you have a system in place for the students to be chosen? What would the system, do you have a system in place for the students to be selected or chosen to be on these committees?
Yes. We actually polled, talked to the, does the students have a faculty, have a student representation? So we worked with the student representation to select the students in the committee. I do not select as the dean, as a student.
All right. So in terms of the School of Medicine, there will be a group of students put together to come up with those recommendations?
Correct.
Okay. Can I get, if the students are put together, can I get a copy of it to know how it's all set up together?
Sure. We'll send it there.
Sure.
And the law school has an admissions committee?
I do not know the answer to that offhand, I'm sorry to say.
So I'm making assumption that it does?
I assume so.
Okay. Does it, is it subject to the open meetings law or not?
I don't believe so.
I'm just looking for consistency.
Fair enough. I don't have a full answer to that, but I can take a look and...
I just use the law school as another example, that's all.
In the sense, can if I, can, the accreditation, the LCME, which is the Liaison Accreditation that accredits medical school, requires that this conversation be confidential. So, because...
Kathleen, I'm sorry, but I think that that's an excellent, if we could get back to, Trustee Judah, with the answer to that about, that would be extremely helpful and insightful.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm not trying to hold up the works.
No.
You can always revisit it.
Good question.
I think it's an excellent question. Kathleen?
Yeah. My, my comments are that the new, that this new governance plan for the School of Medicine does give the faculty greater representation on the executive committee, standing committees, and the full complement on the faculty council, which are all positives. And I want to thank the Vice Chancellor's Office of Legal Affairs for giving us the opportunity to comment on the governance plan. As the faculty representative to this committee, I need to draw your attention to a problem with the proposed governance plan. Trustees need to be aware of the fact that this plan, under Article 5, Section 5.2, states that deans will appoint department chairs, and that chairs then have the authority and responsibility of Article 9.3 under the bylaws. What this section ignores is Board Bylaw 9.1, which states that department chairs be elected by appropriate faculty in their unit. Despite the fact that the School of Medicine faculty accepted the current plan by a substantial margin, the proposal violates a faculty right, which has been in place for decades. And there is a peculiar irony that a City College governance plan sidesteps the requirement for elections, since it was the very upheaval at CCNY in 1938, which led to the democratization of governance there, and then in all of CUNY. I agree, sure, the graduate school is a substantial unit where the presidents appoint program chairs, presumably with consultation from the faculty. But my point is that the graduate school is an anomaly, not a model. With about 140, 40 central line faculty and over 1,600 campus faculty who do vote for chairs on their own campuses, and these faculty who are clearly qualified to teach PhD courses, it might be argued that our election process would be cumbersome. However, it could be constructed, and in any case, I don't believe it was a good model for this new School of Medicine. The bylaw requirement in 9.1 is a model, and it's a CUNY practice. And I believe that the professionals should be accorded the respect of autonomy and not managed through appointed chairs. So today, despite the vote, as the UFS representative, I am representing all faculty, not some. And what I'm stating to the trustees is that I'm requesting that this issue be opened up for discussion, and that election of chairs be recognized as a 21st century norm. I would be pleased to support such a norm for our graduate school faculty, our future and current standalone institutions, such as a future School of Medicine. In the future, though, not as proposed here today.
Thank you.
I, first of all, I want to thank Professor Barker for her very helpful comments and very, under limited time, and very, very helpful comments that, along with others, helped make the, I think, make the plan better. So thank you for that. And I think, you know, we respectfully disagree on this issue, that there, this is a graduate school, you know, this is, this is a school that will be giving MD degrees, that the graduate school is, is an example where there, as you, as you mentioned, there are not elected department chairs. The School of Professional Studies, there are not elected department chairs. It is not a monolithic model adhered to by every institution. And I would add, as you said, that the faculty of Sophie Davis voted in favor of this model.
If I can add, even though this is a new school, it's built on the foundation of a school program that's 40 years old, and the school, the Sophie Davis School, has operated with this rule since the beginning. So this is not new. This is something that the faculty are used to, and they voted in favor of it because they, they like to be, to be this way.
So, Trustee Barker, can we say that it is, and make it clear in the minutes, that this is not a model, that this is a continuation of a process that has existed at Sophie Davis for some period of time, but that by passing this, we are in no way changing the governance models that we have used historically throughout the rest of the rest of the campus?
I think that is accurate. What I am trying to point us towards, though, is that the, these two models for these two schools are certainly not normative in terms of shared governance across the United States. They are anomalies. And I realize that Sophie Davis has been working with that for some time, but especially to appeal to very solid professionals in the future who will want to have autonomy to recruit those physicians, those physician scholars. They will be examining departmental structure, and I think this is something trustees should consider, whether there should be bylaws that are, that apply to some units and not others. And I think in terms of recruitment, we just don't have St. Barnabas now. There will be future hospitals, other affiliations. And as you're recruiting faculty, they will be looking at their conditions of employment. And appointed chairs are not always a great thing, as faculty know.
Can I?
Please.
The reason why Sophie Davis has been like this for 30 years, because this is overwhelming model in medical school around the country.
That was my next question.
So, I'm, actually, I'm not aware of any medical school who has an elected chair. I cannot say that it's true for 100% of the school, but there are 140 medical schools in the country between the United States and Canada, and the overwhelming majority has, the chairs do serve...
So that was my next question, is what is the, the norm for medical schools?
This is one of the reasons why Sophie Davis used this model, is because this is the model in the majority of medical schools.
So, if I may summarize, and then I will let the remainder of the committee, we're in, this committee's action are in no way making this the norm for the remainder of the campuses, but we are recognizing that in starting a medical school, we are trying to be norming with other medical schools, and we will be recruiting with the, with the faculties that are looking at us as they look at other medical schools and their governance plans. And we're not trying to change CUNY's governance plans for the remainder, but we're being, if our norm is, it would be other medical schools. Did I get that correct?
I believe so. At least from, from my perspective.
Are there any other questions, guys? Yes.
I guess I, just, a point of clarification, is it, or is this august board being told now that appointed chairs are the norm in medical schools in the United States? And I just want to, I want to know a yes or a no?
Yes.
90%, 20%?
I don't know the percentage, but I, I don't know of any medical school, you know, I've been in this business for a long time.
Yes.
And I don't know. There may be some I can not tell you, but I know that the majority of the school do serve in this model.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Professor Martel, I didn't see you.
How could you not?
My partner in crime.
Yes, ma'am. We recognize that the, the medical school governance plan is, from a faculty perspective, is an improvement over the existing medical school governance plan, and we appreciate the, the efforts of, particularly Vice Chancellor Schaefer's efforts in that regard. However, Professor Barker brings up a point that I think needs to be brought up. It strikes me that, that whether it's, whether it's schools with one department, or whether it's other forms of organizational structure, my, my 25 years around here has seen a movement towards, excuse me, a movement away from elected chairs, by no means the dominant form, don't misunderstand, but I think she raises a point that we need to just remember. You know, when you look at the faculty, the coach survey, what did they value the most? One of the things they valued the most was the fact that their, their relationship with the department chairs. I just ask that you file that away and think about it as we move forward on this issue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we value that relationship, and we, we will take that into consideration, but having heard that the norm in medical schools may be something different.
When is that?
So that's why we wanted both of those statements to be on the record, that we value the shared governance and the process we have used, but we also value and appreciate what the norm is for medical schools. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave...
Well, I'm going to always hear you.
I know. The chancellor asked me, and I'm on record of having voted against the medical school, so I'm going to explain why I did that, and this is probably the inappropriate side, but I'll do it anyway because I have the chair. And I've spoken to the dean and others, and that I am very, 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 very concerned that this, that this school remains true to its mission and vision of making sure that we recruit and train a diversified population. That it would break my heart, spirit, and everything of me to find out that what we have done is to create a low-cost school for those who could have afforded to attend any other school in this country, and who ultimately decide to buy out their commitment or to any other. And so I have made it very clear to the chancellor, while I'm going to vote for this tonight, I, I am asking, pleading, and I feel comfortable having met the administration, but I'm on the record that every year, I will, you know, even when I'm gone, I will come back and, 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 and make sure that we are not providing a, a, a low-cost school for those who could have afforded to go someplace else, and then they turn around and buy out their, 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 their promise. So that is why I have voted against the medical school, but I have confidence in the administration after a very long conversation, which I sincerely do, that, that this school will make sure that we live up to that mission, but I, that remains my major, major concern.
Can I? Just one thing. We will be sending you our students from MedGravers.
Actually, they cannot come, because we only recruit from, the model will be the same. We will continue to recruit students from high school. Can I address your concern with that?
We have a high school.
Huh?
We have a high school.
Good. So, I truly, profoundly and deeply believe in what you said. One of the reasons why we moved toward the medical school is because we were in danger of, of closing, because we wanted to maintain the mission, and we were having difficult time maintaining the mission, because we are surrounded by lots of medical schools who do not believe in the same principle that we believe. So I can pledge my personal and institutional commitment to maintain, Sophie Davis has been, has been a model program through the, throughout the country, and we continue to be, in the, in their path.
I've got blood oaths from a number of people, so I will remember, but thank you. I'll add it to my list, yes.
Just to add to what's been said around the table in regards to students' representation when it comes to School of Medicine, I'm reading, you have on the executive committee, Section 3.2, under meetings of executive committees, and it says that the dean, with some executive, would be appointed a student to sit on these ad hoc committees. There's no, since it's new, moving forward, probably in the future, if we can, let the student body select and then appoint their representative to sit on these committees, because they will know the students better, rather than having a dean or having an executive go and appoint those students to sit on it. Because from what I think and from what I believe, being appointed to something, rather than your peers appoint you to it, has more weight than being selected directly from the dean or from the executive committee. So moving forward, we can then readdress this in the future to make sure that students are appointed from the student body to sit on these committees.
So I think you've heard that there's very strong feelings, and I'm sure you will do all you can to address these concerns.
And I'm going to be standing right behind you.
Absolutely. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And we look forward to your continued engagement and reporting. We, we said, where, 1B6? 1B6. 1B6 is a WAFL item regarding changes to the Graduate Center's governance plan to incorporate the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Deputy General Counsel Jane Sovereign will present this, accompanied by my favorite dean.
It's a great, great conference.
As he comes forward, I will just tell you, the conversation I had with him at the Christmas party was the one who sort of moved me in the direction of at least not continuing to be, to be against the School of Medical Schools. So you all can thank the dean.
You must be very eloquent.
Don't you forget it, Dean.
Thank you.
So again, to, to thank you very much, and again, to summarize the, the governance amendments for the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. And again, as I believe most of you are aware, thank you very much, that this has been a transition process, as you know, for the graduate programs in public health to the CUNY School of Public Health, which is being renamed the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. These amendments to the governance plan were approved by the faculty council of the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy on January 29th, just a few days ago. So to summarize the, the governance structure, this will be one where the dean is appointed by and reports to the chancellor, and has the responsibilities and authority comparable to a college president. There are several advisory bodies, including the dean's cabinet, to advise on policies and operations, which includes the department chairs, the chairperson of the faculty-student council, and also the dean's public health advisory board, which is principally comprised of representatives of external organizations to advise the dean on research, workforce development, and similar issues. There will be four departments. Each will, for its leadership, will nominate and recommend two candidates for chair, who must be tenured faculty members at the rank of associate professor or higher. The dean will select from these two, from these two, or if the dean rejects both, will consult with the department and may select, excuse me, another person. Each department has a committee on appointments, promotion, and tenure, composed of the chairperson and two elected faculty, who make recommendations to the school-wide committee on appointments, promotion, and tenure. promotion, and tenure. The faculty consists of all full-time faculty and appointed joint affiliated and adjunct faculty. And then after the effective date of the governance plan, after this is constituted, if you will, that appointments will then be made through department chair recommendation and approval by the department and college-wide committees, with the dean making the final decision, subject to Board of Trustees' approval. The governance body is the Faculty-Student Council, which consists of all the full-time faculty, joint faculty and deans, those joint faculty and deans have voice but no vote, and seven students. This body will be formulating academic policies and standards, subject to the board bylaws and policies, and this includes review of academic programs, review of curricula, recommending degree granting, and, and other similar responsibilities. The Faculty-Student Council also establishes standing committees and may propose amendments similar to what was discussed previously, amendments to the governance plan. If 20% of the faculty vote to do so, that may be proposed, which may be adopted by a two-thirds vote of the faculty. And that's my summary.
Okay, we have a motion on the table? And we don't have a motion on the table. Are there any questions? I'm sure Professor Barker.
Thank you. So as the faculty representative to the committee, I wanna, again, draw your attention to the issue of appointed chairs. My concerns are similar to the governance plan that we just discussed, and this case references made to Article 6C, number two, departments, and I have been advised that this was a negotiated solution. However, I am left wondering, really frankly, why a faculty member, considering the responsibilities entailed, would put themselves up for nomination as chair, but if not selected, might feel akin to being, to being a groom or a bride left at the altar. I also wonder if it's realistic to expect that at least two or more people be willing to serve, and one or more risk public rejection if one or more are not acceptable to the dean. I think it's going to be difficult to solicit, okay, given this threat to reputation that faculty work many, many years to develop. So again, I'm asking the trustees to consider this issue of appointed chairs, once again, that we open it up for discussion, if not here today, in the future, and that we use what I call the 21st century norm, and as you, you know, probably getting it, I'm not backing down from that 21st century norm. And I will be glad to support a revised governance plan in the future, but not this one. I do wanna end, as I began before, by stating that I thank the Office of Legal Affairs for working with us on this matter, and providing a way for us to provide, you know, give input on it, but we are left as the bride would be herself at the altar on this matter.
I, I can make one point, if that's appropriate, and then I think the dean probably has more than that. I would note simply that in terms of the issue of rejection for individuals, for, for faculty who are putting themselves forward, or, if you will, and that one will necessarily be rejected, I'm not sure that, how much worse it would feel to be rejected by your dean, or to run against someone and be rejected by your peers, so, which is the, the elected model. So I'm not entirely convinced that, that, that faculty will necessarily be deterred, given that the elected model often involves having several people running, and, and again, perhaps peer rejection is a little more hurtful than, than dean, although it's, it's hard to say.
Well, I would just disagree with that. I mean, in this case, the faculty are making the choice as they elect chairs, they're not putting forward faculty names and submitting themselves to acceptance or rejection at another level. I do understand that with two people, you at least have an idea of who might be an effective deputy chair, and I do acknowledge that, but I think the faculty are quite capable of making these decisions in their departments. Just like our elected student leaders are here today, having been elected, they understand what elections mean, and so do our faculty.
So I have two questions, the same two questions we asked previously. What is the norm? Well, I understand the CUNY norm, why did you move towards this, for this school? And did you norm it? We heard that, I think, Trustee Robles asked, what is the norm for medical schools? Is, why is this different? Is there something about public schools or of health that made you move in this direction?
Sure. I'd, I'd like to preface my comments by thanking you for your consideration of this matter. It's a very important issue in, in faculty governance, and Professor Barker, thank you for your tenacity in bringing this up two times in a row for two schools. I applaud you, and I thank you. I want you also to recognize that I voluntarily consider myself a faculty, despite the fact that I am an executive within CUNY, I have been a faculty most of my life, many more years than I've been an executive, and I consider myself a staunch advocate of my own faculty, and a partner in doing everything I can to assist them in manifesting their own power in self-governance. Having said that, I think Professor Barker does, probably in her diaries, remember many instances where competition to attain chairmanship did create a lot of ill will and bad blood within departments. I have seen many such cases, if you have not, I, I would.
Not mine.
Yeah, but there are many, many such examples. We are starting a new venture, and in negotiating with the faculty, I did find that they were comfortable with this model, where very frequently, there is more than one person, and actually, they feel dejected by the fact that only one amongst two was selected by the faculty, and therefore, the second person is not loved as much, or may not be respected as much by the rest of the faculty. So I put upon myself the responsibility of being blamed for the final choice. And I think that that might be somewhat different from elected representatives by the students, because the chairman, at the end of the day, does exercise a different level of authority over the faculty. And there are tensions when there is more than one person who has expressed their interest in chairmanship, and there are tensions between the elected chair, other faculty within the department that have, may have been running for. So these models are not all perfect models, but we felt as a group that this might be an appropriate alternative. We understand that it is not perfect either, but there seemed to be consensus, since this was passed unanimously by the faculty. I beseech you to reconsider your position, because the faculty will very much be honored by you joining them in their expression of their collective will, but I, again, respect your position and your opinion, and I, I know that if this system will not work well, that our faculty have enough autonomy of thinking and, and sense of self, that if this needs to be changed, that they will be the first to bring it forward.
Well, I think there's about as.
All of your arguments are well phrased, but somehow, hundreds of departments at CUNY manage to alight chairs and go forward into the night.
Indeed.
With or without good feelings.
Indeed.
So I am sorry to see yet another instance of chairs being appointed.
Uh, Trustee Jones.
Yes, I would, I would like to say I'm pleased to see that under the Faculty-Student Council, students are well represented on the membership and standing committee. Good work on that.
Thank you, sir.
So are there any other questions, concerns? There being none, I will move this motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Abstentions, thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
That completes our policy calendar. We now move on to the Chancellor of University report. Provost Christie will join us to present item 1C1, the appointment of a vice president at Baruch College.
Thank you, Trustee Beal. I'm joined with a candidate for vice president for Student Affairs, Art King. Art has been serving as Associate Vice President for Student Affairs at Baruch since August of 2014, when he joined us. Our action today, as proposed, will seek to have greater alignment with the other CUNY senior colleges, the scope of his responsibilities, and some changes that we've made organizationally at Baruch now permit this. Art has considerable experience preparing him in this role. He was interim vice president for Student Affairs at San Jose State University, he was assistant vice president for Student Affairs and Diversity at Towson University in Maryland, and he had various Student Affairs roles at Georgia Southern University and George Mason University. He is active in national organizations such as NASPA, ACPA, and he is serving on a three-year appointment of the Board of ENCORE, which is the National Council on Race and Ethnicity. So I present for your consideration, Art King.
Thank you. I will move that motion. May I have a second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The motion carries. Congratulations and welcome on your continued role here at the City University. Would you like to address the?
Certainly, just a few minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Provost Christie, for those kind introductions and remarks, and good evening to the Board of Trustees and members around the table. I serve with this premise, our Baruch students are the most important persons on campus. Without them, there would be no need for the college. Baruch students are not a cold enrollment statistic, but human beings with feelings, emotions, and aspirations. Baruch students are not merely individuals to be tolerated so that I can do my thing. Baruch students are my thing. Baruch students are not dependent on me, rather, I am dependent on them. Baruch students are not an interruption to my work, but the purpose of it. I am not doing our students a favor by serving them. Baruch students are doing me a favor by giving me the opportunity to serve them. And so it's with that in mind that I promise to continue to serve the Baruch community with the top-notch service they have come to expect. We've got the best students on our campus, many of whom are first-generation college students, those with whom I can empathize, because I too am a first-generation college student. This nomination today places me at the top of my profession in the field of student affairs. The work at this level doesn't get any easier, with all the many complex issues we face on a daily basis in our education. Yet, I'm ecstatic at the opportunity for advancement and the institution that I've come to love, not only because of the great students that I get to serve on a daily basis, but I also get to work with a great group of colleagues who bring a strong collaborative spirit to the workplace. I will continue to enhance the programs and service opportunities and effective leadership reflective of my ideals of academic excellence, integrity, and fairness. I thank President Mitchell B. Wallerstein, Provost David Christie, members of Baruch community, and members of the Board of Trustees, our faculty, staff, and administration committee, for granting me this incredible opportunity to serve in this expanded role. I stand committed to linking student affairs with other campus entities to advance the institution's overarching agenda. Again, I am humbled by this recommendation, and I thank you for the chance to serve in this capacity. What an honor, and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I have a copy? Because your first introduction paragraph, I'm going to Xerox and send it around. I don't know if you've known, but I've been having conversations I've had.
Absolutely, and I adopted that from an anonymous writer.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Will President Chase Robinson please join us to introduce a new vice president at the Graduate Center?
Trustee Beal and colleagues, thank you very much. The vice presidency for Communications and Public Affairs is newly created, but it economizes by replacing two positions, currently vacant, which have been eliminated. The Executive Compensation Plan position of Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and a heop position, Special Assistant for Governmental Relations. Becca Kornfeld brings us to the position, 20 years of high-level experience, most recently as Vice President for Marketing at the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, where she oversaw all communications, branding, partnerships, and social and digital media efforts, and dramatically improved operating performance. For example, in 2013, she led a team that increased national corporate revenue by 40%. That year, she also secured a $1.3 million sponsorship, the organization's largest ever. Becca has managed large departments and complex organizations with many internal and external constituencies, and will bring a valuable strategic approach to the marketing of the Graduate Center. Her responsibility will be to raise the institution's visibility within higher education and beyond it, to strengthen ties with external constituency stakeholders and the broader public. More specifically, Becca will develop and implement branding and communication strategies, build partnerships with the corporate and nonprofit sectors and within government, extend her public outreach at the local, state, and national, and global levels, and coordinate institutional responses to relevant political and policy issues, with, I hasten to add, collaborating closely with Vice Chancellor Hirschensohn. She will also serve as a member of the president's cabinet and work closely with senior leaders, including the provost and vice president for institutional advancement. The appointment of Ms. Kornfeld will provide the Graduate Center with a skilled leader in communications, marketing, and public affairs, all essential components in enhancing our stature. I recommend the board's approval.
Thank you. I will move that one. A second?
Second.
Um, you have questions?
Questions. I, it's an esoteric type, vice president for Communications and Public Affairs, okay? She's a fundraiser for us, hopefully put us on the map.
She'll be working with our development office, with our office.
So there is a development office?
Yes.
And so what did we eliminate?
We eliminated a position in communications, and we eliminated a position in lobbying.
In what?
In lobbying.
Lobbying?
Government relations.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Just a comment. Congratulations on combining two positions into one.
Thank you.
I was going to say, it takes a woman to do.
Come on.
All in favor, please say aye. I might get in trouble. They oppose? Abstentions? The motion carries, and welcome aboard. Jay led the clapping, so, as he was twit, twittering at your appointment. So would you like to tweet in the, I don't know. Would you like to let the committee?
Well, first, thank you for that kind introduction, and thank you for your time. I'm really honored for this, for this opportunity and this appointment, and really excited to work to raise visibility for the Graduate Center and for CUNY as a whole, and look forward to the collaboration, and I think there's just so much opportunity, and look forward to taking things to the next level. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for joining us. Thank you very much. And we will now move to, well, Peter Cohen, Vice President of Student Affairs at Kingsborough Community College, will present item 1C3.
I'm representing President Herzak, and he's asked me to share the following statement. Dr. Elizabeth Basile has spent over 25 years working at Kingsborough in various administrative roles, and she's a valued member and trusted advisor on the senior leadership team. Under her leadership, we are undergoing an aggressive fundraising program to enhance the quality of programs and services offered to our students. She has worked closely with the Kingsborough Foundation Board, alumni relations, senior administrators, faculty, and fundraising volunteers in the planning and execution of the development programs. She has compiled an outstanding record in improving Kingsborough's outcomes in the acquisitions of grants and in fundraising. She incorporates. She incorporates innovative practices into plans and strategies and collaborates with other college and university executives and outside organizations as needed to develop appropriate policies and acquire resources. The results of her effort have been impressive and include: Funds awarded to students in the form of scholarships have increased from just over $153,000 in 2008 to over $400,000 in fiscal year 2015. The number of scholarships awarded doubled from 463 in fiscal year 2007 to 925 in fiscal year 2015. Newly formed 1963 Giving Society, which I am a member of, launched and in its first year proudly boasted 68 members. In her new capacity as Vice President, Dr. Basile will be tasked with several additional responsibilities, which include: Plan and implement a comprehensive fundraising campaign to fund the President’s Student Retention and Completion Plan, and develop a comprehensive fundraising plan to fund the Student Union and Inter-Cultural Center. On a personal note, I’d just like to say that I’ve worked with Liz, I think, I said over 25 years, I think it’s close to three decades, and I know no harder worker and no one more passionate when it comes to our college and our students.
Okay. I will move that motion. It’s been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstention, the motion carries, and thank you for your continued service to the university.
Thank you very much. I’d just like to take this opportunity to thank the committee and to thank the Board, the Chancellor, and especially to President Herzak for putting his trust and faith in my abilities. I say this to Vice Chancellor Hirschenzeh: I’m a proud CUNY alumna and can personally attest to the value of a CUNY education. I’ve spent my career at Kingsborough, I’m passionate about the students there, and I hope to be able to do an even better job as the years go forward. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I’m very humbled and proud to be here today.
And thank you for your continued service. Will President Diane Cole please join us to present Item 1C4?
Thank you, Trustee Beal and colleagues. I’m so very pleased to present Sheri Newcombe as a candidate for interim Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer at Queensborough Community College. Ms. Newcombe has 30 years’ experience in higher education, and it spans a number of positions and a number of accomplishments. She has come out of the California system, where she worked on the financial system as Chief Financial Officer at Cal State Fullerton. She came to Sun Guard, actually, along the way to her East Coast landing, and at Sun Guard, she acquired and honed many skills in technology. She was at Queensborough for five years, serving as the Vice President for Finance and Administration, and she led our CUNY First as Campus Executive. I think personally, I can say that Ms. Newcombe is an extraordinary leader. She’s exceedingly talented. One of her many specialties is data analytics and forecasting. And I’ve watched her in action. I think she has an extraordinary skill on a personal level, a professional level, across many different areas of expertise. She’s worked with our faculty and our chairpeople on a resource allocation system. When she was at Queensborough, she successfully implemented CUNY First. We were a vanguard institution. One of the last things she did before leaving us two and a half years ago was to find 17,000 square feet of space, which she found through repurposing. But right now, at this moment, in these very uncertain times, I really feel that she can contribute because of her ability as a data analyst in terms of governance and seeing data and information as an asset. And it’s important that we integrate that information and use it effectively in a strategic way. I have very confidence in Ms. Newcombe and judging just from the reception she got walking through the campus today, it’s really keenly shared by our faculty, our chairpeople, and our fellow administrators. So I hope you will consider her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
It’s been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, President Cole. Thank you. Thanks to the committee. I’m really delighted to be back at Queensborough. My career spans 34 years. I’ve worked for five different presidents. I’ve served on cabinets for more than 20 years. And I’ve been at a land-grant institution. I’ve been in a public comprehensive and at Queensborough Community College. And I can say my heart is with Queensborough Community College. It really is the only place I’ve worked where people really mean it when they say we put students first. And I’ve really enjoyed working for President Cole for five years. I have some wonderful CUNY colleagues. I see some of you here in the room, and I’m very much looking forward to being back. So I thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, and welcome. Welcome back. Thank you. President Jeremy Travis.
Trustee Beal, Madam Chair, members of the committee, good afternoon. I’m pleased to present for your consideration Patricia Ketterer, who is being recommended to be the interim Vice President for Finance and Administration at John Jay College. We’re here today because of a good news within CUNY, which is that the individual who had previously occupied this position at John Jay, Rob Pignotello, who served at John Jay for 22 years, was recently before this committee, where he was named by President Rab to be the new Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Finance Administration at Hunter. So that’s left a big vacuum in our table of organization and one that I’m asking this committee’s approval to fill with the person sitting to my left, Patricia Ketterer. So the first thing to know about Pat Ketterer is that she is a graduate of Baruch, graduated with honors there a number of years ago. Maybe you remember her, Professor Martel?
That seals the deal.
Okay, need I say more, right? But I will say more. So Pat joined my team at John Jay over a decade ago, and in the position of Assistant Vice President for Finance and Business Services, and has been absolutely integral to the progress that we’ve made at John Jay in improving our ability to follow the money, to be able to provide transparency, to bring faculty into a governance process, to really raise the standards of our financial management of the institution. She also oversees a number of operational components at John Jay, and has been, as recently as our retreat on our financial plan last week, has been an indispensable partner of mine in helping to bring John Jay to the state where we can now do very sophisticated financial projections. So I have a great deal of respect for Pat. She, prior to coming to John Jay, she served in the Department of Buildings, so knows government services. So when there’s a need to call somebody within OMB, she usually knows them. She was Assistant Commissioner for Administration of Buildings. Prior to that, service of eight years, she was in the Fire Department, where she served for four years, and then took that job right after leaving Baruch. So deeply experienced in city government, and now at John Jay and at CUNY. And we’re very fortunate that she’s agreed to step up to be our interim Vice President. So I’m asking for your approval for this appointment, and look forward to any questions that you might have.
Okay. I’ll move that motion.
I’d like to second it. I spent four years in the Department of Buildings.
So you know she made it through that, she’s good, right? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries, and thank you, and thank you for your continued service. Would you like to address the committee?
Thank you very much. I’d like to thank the committee, the Board of Trustees, and the Chancellor for this approval of this interim appointment, and thank you, President Travis, for your kind words. I look forward to serving John Jay. In addition to being an alumna of Baruch, I’m also an alumna of Queensborough, so I am truly committed to the, you know, CUNY--
Value is the right word to go right there.
Right. CUNY value, and I had no college debt, right.
CUNY tooth fairy.
I’m a CUNY tooth fairy, and I love working here, and I look forward to continuing to work with the faculty, staff, and students at John Jay and everybody else at the university. Thank you.
Thank you. You’re welcome. And finally, will Provost Travis Son join us? This is our final walk-on item, and a copy is in your packet.
It’s a great pleasure to introduce somebody who does not need introduction, because you probably know him better than I do, because he has been at CUNY for many, many, for many, many years, Bernard Zinnanti. We would like to appoint him to the acting Senior Vice President for Finance and Chief Operating Officer. As you know, Jerry Posman left City College about a year ago to go Medgar Ever. We have been functioning without a Vice President for Financial Officer, and we look forward to his experience. He has worked for many years at Hunter, has worked in the city, was a Deputy Director for Budget for the Office of Management for the City of New York. He was at the Philharmonic in New York. So he has great experience, and we look forward to his contribution.
Thank you. Welcome. I’ll make, I will move that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. You can’t even say “welcome aboard,” so just move your seat. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Beal, and thank you, Provost Travis Son. I’m excited, honored, and humbled by this appointment, and I want to especially thank Chancellor Milliken, Senior Vice Chancellor Dobrin, Senior Advisor Shaw, and Vice Chancellor Sapienza, and all of the Chancellery, really, for the support that they’ve provided to me in doing my work as University Controller. I’m looking forward to working with President Koikko and Provost Travis Son and the other leadership at City College, and I commit to this Board that I will do the very best job I can do for the faculty, students, and staff at City College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just like to add, this is an example of taking one for the team. We will miss him tremendously, but we’re not really losing him. We’re just putting him in another spot where his enormous talents will be accrued to the benefits of City College and to CUNY for some time to come.
Thank you. This completes our agenda. Section 3 advises the committee on the reappointment of faculty members with early tenure. This report appears on our Agenda for Information Purposes only and does not require a vote. We will now hear from Vice Chancellor Waters. But Vice Chancellor Waters, I didn’t get a chance to say this at the General Board meeting, but, and I don’t see her here tonight, but I must tell you, Vice Lieutenant Waters has a phenomenal, I’m sure Teri will agree with, really phenomenal team that’s been working with us. And I want to especially shout out to Andrea Yenko, who has just done a really wonderful job, and please send her my congratulations in terms of the assistance she has given to the retirement committee.
You know, we got to make this clear at the board level at the next meeting.
I will. I will definitely do that.
Well, thank you, and thank you for acknowledging the work of my team. I do ask your indulgence, I realize that the hour is late, but I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to the committee the new Dean for the Office of Recruitment and Diversity, Arlene Torres. Arlene, will you come up to the table, please? I can’t stress enough the work that is being done out of our Office of Recruitment and Diversity. As you remember, we had a major initiative to put together a diversity strategic plan. The campuses then put together their strategic plans. The Office of Recruitment and Diversity in my office has been reviewing these plans, and I must tell you, there is much going on in the university as it regards diversity. One of the initiatives that we have, the Faculty Fellowship Publications Program, assists junior faculty in mentoring them and cultivating their careers, helps them with publication of scholarly writing projects that are essential for gaining tenure, and more than 500 faculty members have completed the program since it began in 1998. This year, we have a cohort of 61 participants representing each of CUNY’s senior community colleges. We also administer the CUNY Diversity Projects Development Fund, which awards grants to colleges and individuals who further the cause of multiculturalism and inclusion across the university. And last year, $97,000 in funding was given out to support 22 projects. In addition to the diversity initiatives, I want to point out that the Office of Recruitment and Diversity is on the front lines in workforce compliance, particularly in our Title IX obligations, providing education to campus chief diversity officers on that angle, as well as compensation, equity, and personnel activity. We also perform comprehensive advertising and outreach for the university’s recruitment efforts, and performs new hire and exit surveys by demographic groups. I just, I say that only to say that there are many crucial and important activities that are being done out of the Office of Recruitment and Diversity, and that’s why I am so excited to announce that Dr. Arlene Torres has joined my office to lead ORD. She comes to us from Hunter College, where she is Associate Professor of Africanana, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies. She has also served very ably as Director of the Chancellor’s Latino Faculty Initiative, which was established in 2006 to advance diversity in CUNY’s professoriate by recruiting and retaining Latino and Latina candidates for university faculty positions. The LFI establishes relationships with universities nationwide and works to develop a world-class group of scholars who specialize in Latino and Latin American studies, and promotes collaborative programming throughout CUNY. Responsibility for administering this program will now move to my office under Dean Torres' continued oversight. Dean Torres’ list of extracurricular activities in support of her passion for diversity and inclusion is more than impressive, and I will mention only a couple of noteworthy positions. She is currently President of the Puerto Rican Studies Association for Research and Advocacy. In this capacity, she works with university and community organizations to support the educational advancement of underrepresented communities in higher education. Recently, she hosted a symposium in Chicago at the National Museum of Puerto Rican Arts and Culture focusing on education, social justice, and emancipatory forms of knowledge. Dr. Torres has also served as President of the Association of Latino and Latino Anthropologists, a division of the American Anthropological Association. We are truly privileged to have her join the Office of Human Resources Management in this critical role. So I did want to present her to you, even though she is not at the Vice President’s level, maybe we’ll change that. I still thought it was important for everyone here to meet Dr. Torres, Dr. Arlene Torres.
Thank you so much, and I’m really delighted to be given the opportunity to serve in the capacity as University Dean for Recruitment and Diversity. At CUNY, our goal is to promote and respect different forms of knowledge engendered by diverse members of our society. And we have a responsibility to provide students, and I want to emphasize, to provide our students with a learning environment that enriches their understanding of themselves and others. And this means that we must continually affirm our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion at all levels, and not just the formation of policy, but in practice. In my role, I’m mindful of compliance mandates to ensure non-discrimination, and we work closely with chief diversity officers, among others, on the campuses to provide the necessary training and support systems to achieve our objectives. But as we engage in our day-to-day responsibilities, I’m always thinking of the bigger picture. How do we achieve our immediate objectives while we work on long-term goals that reflect our vision for CUNY and for the Office of Recruitment and Diversity? The implementation of the Master Plan helped us to clearly articulate a vision for diversity, and this has allowed us to provide university leadership with guideposts, if you will, to encourage and to facilitate best practices. But what I most appreciate about the plan is our willingness to work with the varied campus cultures to encourage university leaders to develop and design faculty strategic plans that make sense, given the particularities of their own institution. And by working collaboratively with Provost Deans and members of the faculty, university leaders can and do send the message that a vision for diversity must continually be assessed and enacted in practice. I have begun to review all of the strategic plans, and I am pleased to see the range of strategies being deployed to strengthen recruitment, improve climate, and support retention. Recent experience has underscored that diversity, equity, and inclusion are integral components of life at CUNY and are recognized as crucial to the public good of New York City and beyond. of life at CUNY, and are recognized as crucial to the public good of New York City and beyond. But research has also demonstrated that exposure to different viewpoints and perspectives broaden student engagement with their peers, their families, and their communities. We have to be intentionally strategic in our direction. And so I'm thinking through the kinds of mentoring programs, opportunities for professional development among our faculty and our staff, so that we build partnerships with academic affairs and with student affairs to further advance our recruitment and retention efforts again at all levels. And I certainly hope that we can improve our rankings as a university system whose minority faculty representation is top-tier. At the end of the day, universities do reflect the world that we live in, but they're also laboratories. They're spaces to imagine, to experiment with, and to create new possibilities. As we grow and learn about those possibilities, we have the power to build capacity when each of us commits to transforming our society by responsibly engaging with policy and practice that effectively supports diversity, equity, and inclusion at CUNY. And I trust that you will join me in that effort, and that we can celebrate that effort together for years to come. Thank you.
I want to extend a special and warm welcome. You know, this has been a passion of mine, and as I approach the end of my tenure...
Don't smile.
I'd love to see a really robust discussion, and as the chancellor knows, I have questions about how our governance structure, how our chair structure, how our other structure work with or against inclusion. And I'd love for us, and maybe not in this, to have an open and honest conversation about how our structures actually improve or hinder that process. So I look forward to working with you and with others.
Thank you so much.
Other than the other addition, yes.
I just have one comment. Welcome, Dr. Torres. I'm very excited about your appointment. I didn't realize that you were overseeing the Puerto Rican Faculty Project, and that was one of the projects that the former chancellor spearheaded in 2006 with some controversy and too much success, which you've pointed out. So I'm just so proud to see that that energy back in the day has continued. Every single solitary study, not that I've read them all, but I read the bullet points on diversity, always points to one really main point, which I'm sure you know, and everybody at this table knows, leadership starts at the top, and if you don't have that leadership, there's nothing that you're going to come with us on a 10-point plan that we're going to effectuate. So you, part of your challenge really has to also be, dare I say, to hold us accountable. And so I'm going to ask you how you can help us do that, right? At the trustee level, at the president's level, at the central administration level. Because if we cannot exercise that leadership, and we do, but we need to maintain it, and we have to put it at the highest levels, and that's diversity, you know, meaning all things, as you correctly pointed out. There's, I use the term ethics of inclusion, and everybody's got to be at the table. So if you can help us work out that leadership piece, which is the hardest part for any institution, big or small, so welcome again, and that's the homework assignment for us, I think.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? There being none, I call adjournment for this meeting. Thank you very much.